Good evening. Welcome to the May twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd. Reiman.
Here.
Reiman. Corbin. Sol. Rowan. Present. Shay.
Here.
Schultheis. Mayor Box.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We are going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer. Mr. Councilmember Byrd is not here this evening and Councilmember Reiman has graciously agreed to do the prayer, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
If you would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you at really the close of our business day and the start of this Business Council meeting. We'd ask that you would give us wisdom and knowledge that you have throughout time. So we thank you and we praise you and we say we are just grateful for your leading and your guiding in this day. We'd ask now for your wisdom as we would take on the different tasks that are set before us and that we would be able to represent our people of this city well. And so, Lord, we thank you again for the gift of life that you've granted to each one of us and the many opportunities that it presents to serve you well. And it's by your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reiman. Now, you may have noticed we started the meeting a couple of minutes late because we were trying to figure out the best way to be able to handle the situation that we don't, do not have a quorum, and because we don't have a quorum, that means we are not able to conduct any official business until we do have a quorum. And it is our understanding that one of our council members is on the way here, and once that happens, we will be able to conduct official business. And typically, we would, we would likely wait until that happened, but for those people who are not watching on television or here in the room, you know that there's a large number of people here in the room who have come for a particular presentation, and we would rather not make you folks wait. And the item that is, your item on the agenda does not actually require specific action by the council and does not actually require a quorum. So we are going to move ahead on the agenda with those items that we can take care of without a quorum. And then when Mr. Corbin joins us, hopefully, we will be able to amend the agenda at that point and then take up those items, but in the meantime, we're going to do those items that we believe that we can do or that we know that we can do without a quorum until Mr. Corbin arrives. I hope that made sense. So at this point, we are going to be skipping over the consent agenda items because that does require a quorum for the roll call vote. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And I'm going to make this statement before we do public comment. It is, it is up to the public commenter whether they would like to address a full quorum of council or the majority, the minority members of council that are here. If you want to address a full quorum, we will give you that opportunity later in the meeting if we do have a quorum at that time. But if you would like to address council at this time, we would allow you to do that at this time, but you will only be allowed to address council at one time during this meeting. We do have rules in regard to addressing council during public comment period. You are limited to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of it, in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired. This is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to us. We do not engage in discussion at this time or answer direct questions, but if there's a question that can be answered by staff, they'll be able to circle, circle back to you later in the meeting. And please address all of your councils, or excuse me, all of your comments directly to council members. And we ask that when you approach the podium, you please state your name and municipality for the record so that we know whether or not you are a member, or excuse me, a resident of the City of Holland, because that's important to us. So if there is anyone here who would like to address council at this time, even though there is not a full quorum, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close this public comment period, but once we have a quorum, we will open it up for an additional public comment period. Next item on the agenda is item number nine. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, missed you there. I will reopen the public comment period.
Thank you.
Would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Mary Kamara Hegemeyer and I live in North Holland.
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent. Well, I'm grateful to be here in front of you today. Like I said, my name is Mary Kamara Hegemeyer and I am Miss Sunrise Side. I am aware that I'm on the Sunset Side, but last year I began competing in the Miss America Opportunity and in the Miss Michigan Opportunity, and one of the locals that we were able to compete with is all the way up in Alpena. So I've had the privilege this year of representing both Holland and Alpena, Michigan as Miss Sunrise Side. In the Miss America Organization, every contestant has to have what we call a service initiative, and that's something that you're passionate about, that you want to share with your community, that you'll take action on. And for me, my service initiative is called Good Neighbors: Celebrating Our Differences. I'm a graduate of Hope College, and when I arrived at Hope, I said I wanted to do two things: get a four-point-oh GPA, big dreams, and make a difference on campus. I graduated with a three-point-nine-two, so I didn't quite make the four-point-oh, but I did make a difference on campus. And the space that I chose to do that work in was with our Diversity and Inclusion Office because I firmly believe that where we have the biggest problem is where we have the space for the biggest opportunity. An opportunity is where I want to dig in and grow. And while I was at Hope, I was able to bring people together, not just solving problems that came up, but really celebrating our differences. And I've seen the way that Hope College, as a smaller little city inside of Holland itself, has been able to celebrate difference in a way that brings people together. And that's exactly what I've been able to work on here in Holland as Miss Sunrise Side. And I want to tell you about one special activity that I really enjoy doing with residents. I've tried this with everyone from Girl Scouts to senior citizens, and it's worked. It's called a connection circle. It's when you bring people together and there's focused listening happening. Like right now, I'm speaking, you're listening, and that's exactly what we do in a connection circle. You partner up with someone, you're given a prompt, they tell a story, and the listener focuses on really listening to what that person is saying without having to think about what they'll say in response because they're just listening. And then you flip it around. And I've seen this change people's entire perspectives. I've seen teenage boys be given a story about a miscarriage that they probably would not have heard until they were forty years old. These kinds of deep connections and celebrations and this vulnerability is exactly why I do this work. Because when we can come together and recognize that we all have different experiences, we all operate out of different contexts, but when we come together as a team, as you all are, we can make a better difference if we're able to celebrate the ways that we are different instead of trying to hide them and pretend they're not there. So I've been honored, absolutely honored, to be Miss Sunrise Side this year and get to share this message with anybody who will listen, and this is one of those forums. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close this public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to be able to speak to us and address us directly during our council meetings, we do also provide the opportunity to be able to send written communications to council, and we do that through an email address that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We do not read those, those comments out loud during our council meetings, but we do accept those into the record when we have them. We do not have any this evening, but I do always like to make that announcement so that people know that they have the opportunity to be able to do that. Next item on the agenda that does not call for action by council is item number eleven, reports from special committees. The Holland Youth Advisory Council update and farewell to the class of twenty-twenty-five scholars. Mr. Van Dijk.
Yeah, this is one of those, a little loud. This is one of those bittersweet times of the year where we say goodbye to some very important parts of our organization. You don't want to hear from me. Joan is going to come up, and I think quite a few of the students are going to speak tonight, so Joan, I actually have... I have it over here, yeah. So if you'd like, you can grab the clicker that's on the podium and advance the slides yourself. Well, it looks like Joan's not going to do any talking, so if the students, you would like to come up and address council, that'd be wonderful.
Good evening. My name is Yaslen and I am the Chair of Core Counsel and serve on the International Relations Commission, and welcome to the twenty-twenty-five Senior Farewell for the Holland Youth Advisory Council. This year, Core Counsel chose Karina Martinez for the twenty-twenty-four Youth Social Justice Award. She truly exemplifies what it means to be an advocate for social change and demonstrates the powerful voice you can have in our community. Hyatt students participated in STEM Night at West Ottawa, and any participants could make a wind-powered car. Hyatt also sponsored a motivational speaker to come to Holland High and Holland Middle School. This event was so successful that we will be doing it again. Hyatt also, Hyatt students also braved freezing cold temperatures to welcome folks to the first holiday on the farm at Van Ralty Farm.
Hello, my name is Ruby and I am the Chair for the Social Services Committee. We started this year with volunteering at the mobile food pantry at Holland High. This drive-up food pantry serves all of Ottawa County, whether it rains or shines. We also sponsored a craft project at the Boys and Girls Club. Kids made snowflakes from popsicle sticks and paint and glitter. The students also volunteered their time on a Saturday at Community Action House. We sorted fresh produce and stickered almost everything that didn't move. Our biggest project of the year was donating food kits to Community Action House. We started by requesting three-hundred-and-thirty dollars from Meyer. They generously donated a thousand dollars instead, so we were able to expand the number of food kits we donated to forty-eight. This project required us to go shopping for the food kits, assemble the food kits, and deliver them. This was a very rewarding experience.
Hello, my name is Owen and I serve on the Environmental Committee. This year, the Environmental Committee focused on native plant gardens. In collaboration with the Outdoor Discovery Center, the Environmental Committee is bringing a beautiful, low-maintenance native plant garden to Jefferson School. The Jefferson second graders chose the spot where the garden should be, near enough to keep an eye on it from their classroom window and close enough to a water spigot. Hyatt students then placed black plastic on the site to kill the grass, and now we wait for the plants to be delivered in early June. The second graders will plant the native plants, and Hyatt students will water and weed the garden throughout the summer to help it get established. This garden will supply bees, butterflies, and birds with essential food and shelter. The native plants will improve the soil and take less water to maintain it. We will also be installing a birdhouse made by two Hyatt students. This will create an ecosystem that will support local bird populations while enhancing biodiversity.
Hello, my name is Karina Martinez and I serve on the Recreation Committee. This year, we decided to help out at the Farmer's Market Fall Fest where students played games with kids and handed out prizes. This was also our fourth year that we decorated Christmas cookies with over a hundred kids at Boys and Girls Club. We want to thank DeBor Bakery for donating cookies again this year. It was also the fourth year that we sponsored a scavenger hunt following the Saint Patrick's Day Parade. The weather was perfect for a fun activity in downtown Holland. The students held an Easter egg hunt at Boys and Girls Club this year. First through fourth grade students were thrilled to look for eggs outside. It was the perfect day for an egg hunt and the Easter Bunny made a surprise appearance.
As I said before, I serve on the International Relations Commission, and this year, the IRC worked on global and local outreach, including hosting Mayor out from the City of Austin and sharing Hyatt's impact. Kaig Garcia and I also pushed for more welcoming signage, and we're now exploring ways to connect the youth with the wider world through education and look forward to continue this work.
Hello, my name is Leila, and this past year, I've had the privilege of serving on the Human Relations Commission. This past year, the Human Relations Commission, we have met monthly to help serve and represent communities in Holland that we find underserved or underrepresented. And an example of that is we put on the Social Justice Awards to help highlight the work of people in our community who have helped these people, who we want to highlight and respect.
Hi, my name is Greta and I serve on the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. The Neighborhood Improvement Committee did a lot of work this year on many levels. Committee subgroups focused on several issues in the community and included the City Bench Initiative, focusing on adding benches to increase walkability in the city, as well as the Neighborhood Connections Work Group, the Active Transportation and Safety Work Group, and the Age Friendly Initiative Group. The Community Development Block Grant did a significant amount this year as well, working on providing funding for programs in areas like affordable housing, neighborhood connection, and homelessness. This semester, the committee shifted its attention towards our work plan for the next fiscal year and for the next five years, identifying priorities for programs and partnerships and developing strategies for funding allocation. I look forward to seeing what the group accomplishes in the coming years.
Hello, my name is Henrik and I serve on the Downtown Development Authority. This year, the Downtown Development Authority has focused on tackling key issues like homelessness by working with local groups to provide support. They've also reviewed and approved recent construction and renovation projects in our downtown. Finally, they've been meeting with experts to improve things like the garbage system and filling empty spaces on the upper floors of buildings in our downtown. These steps aim to make downtown a better place for everyone.
Good evening. My name is Abby Bass and I serve on the Max Transit Committee. This year, Max Transit introduced a new app for riders, offering ride-tracking and online ticket purchasing. Alongside launching the app, Max made improvements to its employment recruit system to streamline hiring. The agency also experienced several leadership changes over the past year, and most recently, they welcomed a new executive director following the retirement of their previous leader.
Good evening. My name is Ice and I serve on the Police Community Relations Commission. This past year, the PCR unfortunately heavily discussed the impact of tragedy and loss within our community, but also because of this, as a group, we reflected on and emphasized the importance of checking up on old friends and loved ones, and we also continue to develop strong ties with community organizations such as NAUP, Midtown Counseling, and the Boys and Girls Club.
Hello, my name is Nikki and I serve on Teen Court. This year, I was given the opportunity to collaborate with local judges, police officers, lawyers, and students to discuss real teen court cases where we focused on ways to prevent vaping and support mental health among youth. I'm very grateful to have served on a board surrounded by such accomplished individuals and will take this experience with me as I begin my journey of becoming a lawyer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maggie and I serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Over the past few months, the Parks and Rec Board has been hard at work monitoring the construction of the new ice rink, discussing what programs best serve our community, such as the current Little League programming, and reviewing the maintenance and quality of our parks. We've been especially focusing on the improvement of walkability of trails, the planting of tulips, and just overall giving Holland residents the best opportunities to get involved in the community through fun recreational programs.
Hello, my name is Drew and I serve on the West Michigan Airport Authority. Throughout the year, the West Michigan Airport Authority has made significant progress on improving the airport. We've discussed purchasing affordable winter equipment and hiring a new director and addressing the charges associated with the flight school.
And here are the seniors of the Holland Youth Advisory Council. Seniors, please stand and remain standing after I call your name. Abby Bass. Ben Flutter. Carlos Sanchez de la Cruz. Corbin White. Gio Salinas. Greta Bass. Hannah Tenorio. Ice Badran. Joy Piersma. Karina Martinez. Lily Mendoza. Maria Lee. Nikki Markovic. Noah Purton. Owen Steimer. Ruby Van Heis. Simon Arns Horse. Sydney Ojedes. TJ Vandermeer. And Tilia Murphy. Congratulations, seniors, and thank you.
Any comments from council? And actually, before we make comments, I do, would like to note for the record that Mr. Corbin joined us at six-twenty PM, which means we do have a quorum. Welcome, Mr. Corbin. Any comments from council members? Yes, Ms. Rowan?
Yes, congratulations to all of you, Hyatt students. Wonderful job, great presentations. We always enjoy hearing from you, and it's just heartening to see, you know, what good hands we're in going forward. I love the program. I love the enthusiasm for your participation in it. And I just want to give a shout out to Greta Bast, who is the recipient of the Elise Joy France Scholarship that the Ottawa County Bar Association gave out earlier this month. And so, these students, besides the work they do with Hyatt and other organizations that they might be involved in, you know, their, their reach is far and wide in our community, and I just wanted to say congratulations to all of you. Seniors, go out and take over the world.
Mr. Reiman?
I would just extend my gratitude as well for kind of rolling up your sleeves and investing in knowledge and experience in our city, in our community, and I think you are going to be very, very blessed for it. Your depth and breadth of knowledge and experience, I did not have that as an eighteen-year-old from the little town of Golds that I grew up in. And so, I think way to go for making yourself available and to invest in your community and your own experience that way. I hope, wish you the very, very best.
Mr. Shay?
I just want to say how impressed I am that every student that I bump into from Hyatt is an exceptional human being, and I'm really surprised by that. I think there's a lot of empathy to be found in a seventeen, eighteen-year-old, and that was true for me. And so, I just thank you all for your enthusiasm and all the really hard work you do.
Mr. Corbin? Oh, you winked at me, so I assumed.
I wasn't prepared to make any statement, but no, thank you. Many of you worked on committees and boards that were, I'm also a part of, Airport Authority being one of those, and we've been through a lot of things at the Airport Authority, and you've been right there with us. So appreciate your interest, the time and the engagement you all provide, even our study sessions. You work with us, you talk with us, you give us ideas. So thank you very much, and I know we're better off for having you in our community. Thank you.
One of, one of the benefits of going last is I get to echo what all of my wonderful council members have had to say. This is one of my favorite programs of everything that we do in Holland. I think it is incredibly important, and frankly, I am more and more impressed with all of you each and every year as you tell us what you have done over the course of the year. You just keep getting better and better and better. I was involved as a high school student, but not nearly to the level that all of you have become involved. This is going to be great training for you moving forward. One thing I say to students all of the time is the best thing that you can do for your world and your community is to get involved. Woody Allen said eighty percent of success in life is showing up. You guys show up. Keep doing that. Keep showing up. Keep doing the things that you think are exciting. Keep doing the things that get you excited. And we expect to see many of you back here again in these seats. We have high hopes and high expectations for all of you. Congratulations, congratulations. And I think that a motion is in order in regard to congratulations and farewell. What is the pleasure of council?
Well, there's no pressure there.
No, none at all.
The move, the motion is to extend our sincere congratulations and gratitude for serving.
We have a motion for Reiman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Congratulations. Hyatt students and parents, there is a reception for you out in the lobby. You are welcome to go out there and enjoy the reception and beverages and refreshments, or you are welcome to stay here for the council meeting because I think each of those are equally exciting things to do. And while they are moving their way toward the reception, each and every one of them will just wait a few minutes until they've, they've made their way there. So, so council, just to get us, everyone back up to speed, we do have Mr. Corbin back here again. And for those people who may have joined us since the beginning of the meeting, our goal was to try to deal with as many items as we could that did not require action by council. One of the things that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting is should we amend the agenda, and then we realized we can't amend the agenda without a vote of a quorum of council, and so we decided we would move forward with the agenda, and then when Mr. Corbin arrived, we would make, make a motion to retroactively amend the agenda. So I would be looking for a motion from council to retroactively amend the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Reiman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to go right back to the beginning of the agenda with those items that we had not covered previously. The first of the items that we had not covered are consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and have been reviewed by council members as part of our packet. They will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
Okay. For A, excuse the absences of council members Byrd, Reiman, Sol, and Schultheis. For B, approve the minutes of the May fourteen regular meeting. For C, oaths of office. For D, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five capital budget amendment for forty-nine West Third Street parking lot curb and gutter installation. For E, declaration of surplus materials, May twenty-twenty-five, that's from the BPW. For F, claim filed against the city. For G, Van Ralty Farm Civil War muster historic saloon on September nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-five, adopt a resolution. For H, the Holland Little League Agreement. For I, February financial reports. For J, the Ottawa County Tax Forclosure Avoidance Payment Reduction Program. And 4K, an amendment to the ten-A parking lot lease agreement.
Great. Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Reiman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Corbin?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Reiman?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to do our second half of the public comment period. For anyone who did not want to address just the minority of council members, this is your opportunity to speak to the quorum of council members. I don't believe we've had anybody join council chambers from the first time that I gave the rules for public comment. from the first time that I gave the rules for public comment. So this is your opportunity. If there's anyone here who would like to address council at this time, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anton Hunrickson, Zeeland. I usually come and advocate for religion's freedom. But tonight, I'm concerned about some things because I am a citizen and once a teacher, so I care about kids. And that's pretty much what this is about. A couple of years ago, I was on river, and I had some signs that I had put up there. And out of one of the doors of City Hall, a woman entered onto the sidewalk and a dress came over to me. She had City of Holland on her shirt to inform me that you cannot put a sign in the ground. You can hold it, but you can't put it in the ground. So I took the signs up and I held the one in my hand for an hour. Then I went home. So I would imagine that's a rule or an ordinance that you have. The Tulip, another time at a study session, the Tulip time director was concerned about having or suggesting a beer tent on Central Avenue right beside Centennial Park across the street from Central Avenue Church. And Councilman Mike Trethuie, pro tempere at the time, was adamant about the ordinance for the park, no alcohol. So obviously, there was never a beer tent there. Besides that, there was also a church. So I imagine there's some jurisdiction about that as well. So recently, I'm driving down river, and I noticed a sign, Centennial Park, right at one of the walkways. And I pulled over and looked at it, and this is what it said. I was going to remove it, and then I thought twice about it. And then I did remove it to bring it tonight. And I saw the people here, and I thought, well, I'll wait until I talk to you privately. Downtown Holland, no social district drinks allowed in the park. And that's, I'm putting the sign back. It did not say City of Holland, so I didn't know who put it there. I thought, it's against the rules, so I could take it. But then I thought, hmm, maybe it is the City of Holland, but who is it? So what I'm concerned about is your decision about serving alcohol at the ice skating rink. And I know the man that it's dedicated to was a teacher, and I was a teacher. So that makes a difference to me that this is not promoting alcohol at an ice skating park that is for families and children. But I also understand that he wants curling to take place. So I would imagine that's for adults. And that being said, would you have alcohol just for adults at a certain time? What is, what is your ideal? What are you thinking? And again, I say to myself, when in doubt, don't. I don't think it's necessary. You've got whole college students teaching children, and they're fine being at Holland Brewery. But an ice skating rink, I don't think that's appropriate. That's my opinion. But talking to other people, just asking them, you ask them. What do you think about alcohol at the ice skating rink? You do it, not me. And you see how they react to me, like, what? Who would think of that? So maybe I'm asking the wrong people. You ask them and find out whether that's appropriate. I don't know that you're going to vote on that tonight or not. But I would suggest delaying that until you get some public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item seven A, special order of the day, public hearings, Community and Neighborhood Services Community Development Block Grant, approval of the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty consolidated plan and the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six action, annual action plan. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another one of those things we get to do once a year. Mark is going to come up. Mark, you may want to grab the clicker if it's over there. If not, I can, okay, great. Well, Mark's going to go through the plan for this year. This plan, I believe, covers actually five years. He'll go through the details and give you all the information that you need to make a decision.
Great, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, as Matt just said, that's exactly right. I'm here usually this time of year, every year, asking for approval for the one year, the next one-year plan for the Community Development Block Grant. But every five years, I come to you and ask also for approval for the consolidated plan, which is a five-year strategic plan. And I'll go into a little bit more of that as I, as I go through the slides. So, but just a little bit of background on CDBG. Some of you heard this multiple times, apologies. But CDBG, excuse me. Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city has been a recipient of CDBG funds since nineteen eighty-nine. The grant's primary objective, completely unchanged, very little change in this program since nineteen seventy-five, is the development of viable urban communities. And they're focusing mostly on three things. Decent housing, suitable living environments, and by that they mean sort of neighborhood conditions, and expanded economic opportunities. And everything that is touched by the CDBG dollars that we spend on whatever we're doing has to principally benefit low-to-moderate income persons. And those are defined as persons with incomes below eighty percent of the area median. And HUD, I think rightfully, expects a lot of citizen participation in the development of the annual plan and the five-year plans. And I'll explain as I go on kind of how, how we do that. I'm going to talk about what are the eligible activities that cities are allowed to spend dollars on through with, with their CDBG funds. So they're listed here, five buckets of allowable activities. One obviously is housing. We can't do anything we want to with housing. Obviously, there's that affordable, there's the low-to-moderate income element, but also there's a lot of restrictions on what types of activities can be done in the housing arena. I've listed four of them as examples, but that's certainly not a comprehensive list. We can spend dollars on public facilities. In the past five years, we've, we're the major contributor to two sidewalk installations of filling in some gaps in some low, in what are designated low-income neighborhoods. Public services are, we're permitted to spend dollars in what HUD refers to as public services, more commonly known as social services or human services. But there's a cap of fifteen percent. So we can't spend more than fifteen percent of our total allocation in that, in that area. Which, in our case, we're talking, the total grant typically has been in the low three hundred thousand dollar range, three twenty-five, three thirty. So that means we can spend, if we choose to, around forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars in public services. And there's some examples listed there. Economic development is another allowable activity. I'll just note that not just here in Holland, but nationally, throughout the state of Michigan, that's the least commonly activity that are, is engaged in with Community Development Block Grant funds for, for various reasons. I think there's a lot of additional complexity in spending dollars in that way. And then finally, we can use some of the funds up to twenty percent, no more than twenty percent, in the areas of program management. And then also HUD allows municipalities or recipients to spend some of their admin dollars in the area of fair housing. And we have chosen to do that for several years running. So what is a consolidated plan? It's basically, it's, it's an assessment of the community's conditions and kind of a strategic plan for how a city expects to invest the primarily public dollars that are going to be made available for that purpose. In our case, that's CDBG funds. Other communities, larger communities, have access to other federal funds. But in our case, we're limited to, to the CDBG amount. So within the consolidated plan, there's a needs assessment, there's a housing market analysis, there's a strategic plan. And then it also incorporates the first year of those five-year annual action plans. And I'll be going over the dollar amounts that we're planning to allocate in, in those areas and then seeking your approval for that. The plan is developed by a number of things, reviewing a lot of data. If you had any chance to peruse the plan, you can see there's a lot of tables and charts and whatnot. There's a lot of data that HUD automatically dumps in that plan. And then I sort of review it for accuracy, and then I can add some additional supplemental data. But there's a lot of data in the plan about housing conditions, conditions of the, of the population. But anyway, so there's a lot of data in the plan. There's, we certainly review past performance of things we've spent money on in the past. Were, were those programs effective? Are they meeting a need? We look at recent service demand, and we certainly gather input from, from residents and key stakeholders as we put the plan together. With the primary intent listed there being to meet relevant prioritized needs, to remain aligned with other city plans that, that touch on these areas, and also to certainly adhere to CDBG program rules and regulations. So I think I covered most of this already. What, what's the contents of the plan? You see that listed there, but those are the sections, how the plan is broken out. Yeah, the needs assessment portion covers things like housing conditions, what percentage of homes in the city have, are deficient in like a kitchen facility, what percentage of residents are paying more than, more than a threshold of, for their housing costs that would be sustainable or affordable, overcrowding conditions, those sorts of things. The housing and market analysis covers the areas that are listed there, housing unit data, the, the status of public housing within the municipality, whether or not we have special needs facilities such as for persons that are elderly, persons that have disabilities, a variety of things. It also explores labor conditions. And then finally, there's a strategic plan section, which just focuses on how we, after, after gathering all that information and gathering the input, how do we expect to spend the dollars that we expect to receive over the next five years? And then for the annual action plan, how we anticipate spending our first year's allocation. I noted earlier that public engagement is a key requirement. So I've just kind of broken out here how I went about that in the last six months or so, starting out with two kind of open public meetings that were held at the library back in December. And then I held three additional public, well, three additional meetings by invitation of groups. I kind of, I put out a notice to a lot of organizations, mostly nonprofit organizations and educational entities in the community, and offered to bring this information to them. So I was, three, three different organizations took me up on that opportunity. So all told, fifty-four people were participating in some way or another with the presentation about giving me, opportunity to give me input on what they perceive to be the community development needs in the community. We also did a public survey that was online and available for over a month, and we had fifty-nine individuals respond to that. I'll go over some of the results from that in a second. Certainly, the Neighbor Improvement Committee throughout this five, six-month period is, is reviewing the information coming in and giving me feedback on the development of the plan. They did approve the plan at their meeting on, on April fifteen and recommended to you folks to, to approve it as well. HUD does require a formal public comment period, so that took place. It was posted in the Sentinel, took place from April eighteen to May twenty. And then there's a required final public hearing tonight before you make a decision on the plan. I'll just note to date that there has been, other than the information that came to me from all of the meetings and the public survey, there's been no additional public comment that I've received in the last little bit. And here's just a look at some of the information that was received by way of the survey. Again, fifty-nine respondents. Fifty-two of those were residents of the city. Twenty-one were some, in some capacity, a service provider for services that are provided within the city. So there's some duplication there. Some were residents and service providers. But what this main question is, referring back to the five buckets of allowable activities, setting aside program administration, the other four being housing, infrastructure, public services, and economic development. The question was, which of the following four areas should the city's community development efforts focus on in the next one to five years? And the respondents could select their top two. And you can see a pretty strong plurality of individuals that indicated their preference for a primary focus on housing. And then I asked a follow-up question in the survey. If we do spend those dollars, that fifteen percent cap, on public or social services, what types of areas would be, would make, to the respondent, what would make the most sense in terms of investing those dollars? And there, I provided a pretty, pretty lengthy list of options with the most responses coming in to address the issue of homelessness. So here is the plan, the heart of the plan, how we anticipate spending the dollars over the five-year period, which is the green column. And then over the next one year, July one to June thirty, in the blue column. I won't go over those line by line. I'll just note, I think that this is very, very consistent with how we've spent the dollars in the last five years and in the last, and in the, and in the current program year. Highly consistent in terms of spending upwards of, you know, sixty-five percent of our dollars in the area of the city's own home repair program. We have, in the last three or four years, invested a much smaller amount in terms of homeownership assistance, which is a partnership we have with Habitat for Humanity, Lakeshore Habitat for Humanity, in which we provide some closing cost down payment assistance to their home buyers that are purchasing homes within the city. Public improvements, that's a little bit of unique there that I'm, I'm proposing, or the Neighbor Improvement Committee and myself are proposing a kind of a placeholder dollar amount for infrastructure costs. And, and then no anticipated projects in this next year. And, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, we have seen some growth in our home repair program. And there was strong consensus. The issue of maintaining home affordability for our lower-income residents came through in a lot of the public feedback received. The Neighbor Improvement Committee feels strongly about maintaining that program. And for that program to operate well, it needs, it, it can't, it, it, in many cases, we're responding to emergencies. A roof that's failing, or a furnace that's not working. You need to be able to respond in a timely manner. And if you're operating off of a program that's kind of lagging in funding and you have to put a waiting list into place, that just doesn't, it just doesn't work well. So as that program has seen some increased demand, I felt it was important to kind of protect that program and make sure we have ample funding. And we're, we're fine now, we're fine. We've got some carryover funds that will carry us through next year. So I don't anticipate running into kind of cash flow challenges with that program. But I, I wanted to basically make sure that that program was held in a safe spot for the, for the, for the five-year period. But what that means is that leaves less available for other things. So that being things like infrastructure projects, which can be very costly. But that, putting that fifty thousand dollar placeholder in the five-year plan allows us to amend it more easily if, say, two or three years from now, if we're running lighter on home repair or any other types of expenses for that matter, and we have some kind of surplus funds to work with, which is possible, we could then, in two or three years, consider a larger infrastructure project. And by larger, really, you know, the last two sidewalk projects we worked on, our investments were like in the one hundred and hundred and twenty thousand dollar range. So it's not even that large. But for us, that's a big, for a CDBG, that's a large portion. So I hope that makes sense, why we're creating a placeholder in the five-year plan but not committing any funds in, in the coming year. And then I am proposing, we are proposing about a twelve percent expenditure in the areas of public services. We've not identified the programs yet that we intend to create a sub-recipient agreement with yet, but we know, we've invited several agencies that are meeting the needs that were prioritized by the public and by the Neighbor Improvement Committee. And that's kind of how, that's the process we've used in the past to identify which organizations we would partner with, with those funds. But we're looking at a forty-one thousand dollar investment this coming year. So a pretty status quo five-year plan, a pretty status quo one-year plan. But happy to field any questions about that portion of the plan or, or any of the contents of the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, Devin?
Yeah, kind of a two-parter, maybe with the same question asked differently. Is there a... Is there a kind of way to triage these funds, with home repair particularly, to those who are most in need? And then, kind of, the second part to that is, do we think that the most in need folks know about this and are taking advantage of it?
Yeah, I'll try to tackle the second one first. Uh, we certainly try to get the word out. One of the main ways we do that is through our, um, code enforcement staff, who are out in the community every day, looking at roofs, looking at conditions, talking to people that are facing housing challenges and promoting the program. So that's a very direct way that we promote the program. Certainly, our more formal sources of referral, two-on-one, if you're familiar with two-on-one, all of our local service agencies that work in the city are familiar with it. And in theory, are connecting people to us that they hear about that are, that are struggling with a housing affordability and a housing repair challenge. The way we, I don't know if it's triaging, but I don't know if you're familiar with, so depending on, uh, the income level of the, of the homeowner, we assist at different levels. So if they're in that fifty to eighty percent of AMI range, which for us is the higher range, the higher band, we're assisting at about fifty percent of the project cost up to a cap. If they're in that next income band below that, thirty to fifty percent of AMI, we're helping in more like a seventy-five percent cost of the project. And then the, the lowest income folks, under thirty percent of area median, we're helping at around ninety percent of the project cost. So that's our way of, um, uh, prioritizing, but trying to shift the dollars to those most in need. And historically, we've not, I think there was one year before my time, ten, fifteen years ago, where we did run out of funds. But other than that one off, off-year, we've never not been able to serve somebody who came to us. And in large part, that's also in part, uh, due to our close partnership with HomeCor, which comes alongside of some of our lowest income folks and fills in those ten or twenty percent gaps, even if they can't afford that. So, so, but I have thought about, if we do come to a point, one or two or three years down the road, where, where the dollars are being stretched, we could conceivably knock that income cap down from eighty percent to seventy or sixty or, or fifty.
Sure.
We've not decided or thought the need, we've not felt the need to do that before now.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kim.
Um, the public service component, the forty-one thousand for this year and one-eighty going forward. I, I know you said that it's undetermined at this point, who the recipient or what it's going to look like, but what has it traditionally looked like in the past? What are the, what's the specific form of services or, you know, how, how does it look?
I think it's three years running now that we've assisted, we've, we've contributed to the, the, um, street outreach program through Community Action House and a homelessness prevention program at Good Samaritan Ministries. So we're basically providing like matching funds for things that they're already doing. Or we're, we're, HUD requires, or CDBG requires that anytime we invest, we're adding, we're not just paying for something that's already happening, but we're adding capacity to what they're already doing. So, um, again, for the last three years, those are the two agencies and programs that we've supported. Going forward, in this current year, we're looking at those same two entities. Uh, we've invited applications from those two, again, based on the feedback from the public and from the neighborhood improvement committee and whatnot. But slightly different direction, there's a, a desire to, again, partner with the street outreach program. But, um, there was, uh, there's a program at Good Samaritan Ministries called Circles. It's a national model that kind of, and I'm not going to describe it very well because it's, it's kind of hard to describe, but it's matching persons with pretty deep, ongoing, longstanding financial challenges with, um, a partner of sorts. The individual that's, the, the low-income person is, is labeled the leader in that relationship. And then the, the mentor slash friend role is, uh, what is, what title do they give that individual? But it's, it's kind of a flip of the traditional model where there's, there's the mentor, mentee sort of relationship. So the leader is leading their life, they're leading their direction forward, and then there's the person that's coming alongside. But it's a national model with some very good, um, outcome, um, data that, that Good Samaritan has been involved in for, um, six, eight years now. Good success. Um, so we're trying to expand that program into some of our neighborhoods in, in, in Holland. So that, and that's, that also kind of bubbled up. It's, it's meeting a lot of needs across, so it's not just, it's not just low income. It's persons with mental illness perhaps, or any number of other challenges that are kind of, um, creating that longstanding financial instability, so.
And you sought out, you sought out the, um, Community Action House and the other organizations based on your knowledge that they work in this area or that they would be able to speak most knowledgeably on where to provide support services?
Yeah, we, we start with that data, I mean, to make it a little bit overly simplified, you know, the numbers of responses of the people that said, we want to help in there. We want to, we want these dollars to be invested in homelessness. Well, that resonated with the neighborhood improvement committee. It resonated with how we've, how we've operated these programs in the past. So that led us to, well, who's doing the work in the arena of homelessness that we'd like to partner with? And has the capacity to administer a federal grant? That's a portion of the decision-making. They need to have auditing and financial, um, abilities that are beyond, uh, what some organizations have. So, yeah, the type of, the type of partner organization, um, is a factor. But it's largely for a small enough community that, and, and with my own personal professional background, yes, I know a lot about these organizations and what they do and what kind of programs they operate. So it's kind of linking up what we see as the need with who's meeting that need in the community, um, and then going out and inviting. Rather than, the, the alternative would be to do a larger request for proposals from a much larger scope, or, you know, much larger number of programs or services. And when you're talking about forty to forty-five thousand dollars, it's just not, we're trying to have the process be in, in alignment with kind of what, what, what we're able to do with those dollars, so.
Sure. Yeah, that sounds like a very thoughtful approach.
Yeah, it seems like it's, yeah, we've been pleased with it for the last four or five years. That's kind of how we've done it.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you for what you do. It's, it's a wonderful project, wonderful program, I, I should say. Um, with regard to FY twenty-five, twenty-six, we already kind of know what that award is, correct?
We do, yeah.
And so that, like a grant agreement, and we already have that in place, so, kind of a contract, we have that come, that, those funds coming in. For the five-year projection though, is there any concern or worry about the federal, uh, rollback of, of various grant opportunities that we're, we're taking advantage of here and that, what is the plan for that? That's one. Second part is Holland Energy Fund. And is there any crossover that you do with the Holland Energy Fund and its group to maybe complement both pieces of this tool, um, at all?
Five years ago, there was a, a very intentional attempt to cooperate or collaborate with that program. And we actually set up a special, in addition to the home repair program, we set up a special fund, an additional fund. We carved out some dollars, I think, from that, that what we would ordinarily have put into home repair for assisting with, um, energy efficiency upgrades. And it was just very underutilized. And I think, I don't know if you recall back then, that's when the program, when we were trying to invest, I think there was like a, a minimum of ten thousand dollars of work that had to be done on the home. And our lower-income homeowners just weren't doing ten thousand dollar home energy retrofit work at that time. There was, there were a few. I think we assisted with a few. So we backed away from that. It's still possible. It's, that's, that's an eligible set of repairs. If we can assess that it's kind of essential rather than, wouldn't be cosmetic, but, uh, uh, other than, you know, not, it has to be, you know, the house has to be maybe lacking in some basic repair for us to justify doing some energy upgrades. But we can use these funds for, for energy repairs.
I, I just, point of comment is, or comment to make note is that we've done some restructuring with the Holland Energy Fund. And so I don't know if recently we've been able to take advantage of seeing how we might be able to support one another in this, in this area again, so.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that again, but, and, and most likely, if the repairs are in that category of necessary for livability and safety and whatnot, we can probably figure out how to make it work. The only caveat, I guess, is that we expect to be pretty much spending out the majority of our allocation with the basic demand for roofs and furnaces and sewer repairs and those sorts of things.
And you even made the comment, it is still difficult for people who have needs and don't have the income, whether it be, we provide ninety percent and they only do ten percent, still ten percent sometimes, difficult for that, thirty percent.
Yep.
That's out there, so thank you. And then, um, any risk?
Yeah, well, certainly the risk has increased from, say, what if you would ask me that question three years ago, right? I don't know how to prepare for it because it's year to year. I mean, we, we will have a grant agreement that will be a twelve-month grant agreement starting July one. We've all seen in the news that grant agreements have been rescinded. I don't know what's, you know, what the success of that, because those things have been contested. But, um, yeah, I think we proceed cautiously. I've, I, I did kind of inquire with several of my larger city peers that have been around longer and maybe have a little bit more, um, awareness of possibilities. And I don't know, but they said, yep, we're proceeding, we're proceeding as normal. So that's kind of the track tack that I've taken as well.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Uh, we do need to open this up for a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item seven A?
Motion approved.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support? Support, support by Shay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item ten A, planning commission rezoning request, four-three-eight-four Blue Star Highway. Mr. Van Deiken? Nope, we already did that. We did that before you got here. Yeah, thank you though.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so you remember, we talked about this item at, at some length at your last meeting. It's a piece of property that came in in a recent four-twenty-five agreement with Fillmore Township. Our zoning ordinance, or Udo dictates what that zoning is when it comes into the city as part of that, uh, agreement process, that four-twenty-five agreement process. But Steve is here, he's going to give you a, uh, an overview and answer any questions you may have about this rezoning.
Thank you, Matt. So we did talk about this property just a little bit. And so as Matt mentioned, uh, just a couple of things that I wanted to cover. Uh, one of the things that we talked about was when this property came into the city a couple of years ago through what Udo calls the annexation process, um, it was zoned agricultural in Fillmore Township. So Udo tells us that it comes in as an LDR, low-density residentially zoned piece of property. This is what the property looks like from the air today. This is, uh, the current zoning on the left-hand side. Sorry, I circled this, outlined the property that's yellow, with yellow, so I apologize for that. But then you can see the requested zoning, um, in the middle there. So changing it from the LDR, the yellow, to the industrial, which is gray, to, and the little corner is CMU, our corridor mixed U. So it's about forty-eight acres, forty-three of that would be industrial. Five acres is the commercial, which is essentially the store that's out on the corner. Um, this is what the, uh, property owner would like to rezone the property to, uh, to essentially market, uh, their property for development. So at this point, there is no development proposal. This is kind of a layout for what they think it might look like as they divide it up. Again, the reason for the commercial on the corner to make that, um, existing property conforming, I think I told you at the last meeting, it would probably be likely, uh, depending on what happens, that maybe they rezone that too, if they, depending on how the properties, um, get developed in the future. So, uh, again, this is not a proposal. This is just one of their ideas of how they thought they might outline, um, lay out the property. Just wanted to show you kind of where that sits in relationship to the rest of the city. Of course, we're talking about the southwest corner of town here. This is our master plan map, so this is our future land use map. Again, it looks very similar to what they're proposing. This was kind of what we thought would happen with this corner, um, with having that commercial, uh, piece right there on the corner and the rest of it going to industrial. So again, I would suggest that their request is very much in line with our master plan. So the other thing that I wanted to just talk about for a minute was the airport overlay. And I know some of you are more familiar than others with this, but, um, and you've got in your packet the, the rezoning standards, criteria that, um, planning commission looks at and what you make your decision based on. And, you know, reading those, the one item that kind of stuck out to me was, you know, the question of, uh, will, uh, will the rezoning accommodate or will it be able to meet the proposed rezoning, right? Will they be able to meet Udo? And maybe you look at this map and you go, oh my gosh, it's got this big crosshatched area of the airport overlay. It's not going to be able to be developed. So I just wanted to take a minute to talk about that because it's a little interesting. So this area is in what we call Area Five, Airport Overlay, Area Five. What that tells us is what might be able to be developed in there. And, um, you've got the little footnote on the bottom. Essentially, what it says is, uh, within five hundred feet of the runway, you really can't come out of the ground with any buildings. But once you get beyond five hundred feet, uh, for every seven feet, um, out, further out, you can come up a foot out of the ground. So by the time you get to about seven hundred and forty-five feet away from the runway, you would just be able to do whatever you're allowed to do in the normal zoning that's out there. So, uh, that little measurement there was my attempt at, uh, it's really hard to get to exactly seven hundred and forty-five feet, but, uh, that was my attempt to show you the area that is beyond seven hundred and forty-five feet. So even though there's much of that area is impacted by that overlay, most of the property we're talking about isn't even really impacted by that because it's beyond seven hundred and forty-five feet. So what about the area that is impacted by that? Again, you can come out of the ground as you get beyond five hundred feet. And that area could, uh, you know, accommodate setbacks and detention and parking and other things like that, so, beyond building. So I, I guess I just, that was the one area I wanted to highlight, um, of all those rezoning criteria. Again, we feel like this, um, fits in very well with what, uh, the city was thinking. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this. That was just the, the other item besides sort of the annexation part that I wanted to highlight tonight.
Questions for staff? I think you covered this pretty well last, last go-round. Thank you, Steve. Uh, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item ten A?
Move to approve the rezoning request.
Moved by Freeman. Is there support? Support, support by Shay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Shay?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item thirteen, communications from the assistant city manager. Mr. Van Deiken?
Yes, thank you. I will try to be, uh, a little bit more brief than Keith's normal intro, get through my three items here. Uh, one, uh, city staff from the fire department has moved back into, uh, Collin Park Fire Station full-time. So that's very exciting. Those two that want really, we viewed these two stations as one major construction project, but that is very close to the end and staff is now back in that neighborhood and a little bit closer, uh, to our western edge of the city. Monday remembers Memorial Day, so city offices will be closed. You all are invited to parade, as you typically are. And then the final thing is kind of exciting. I think I caught, um, Mr. Freeman off-guard with this information a little bit earlier. But Tulip Time, um, released a, did a, issued a partial release that confirmed, I think, what we all knew about the festival this year. And that was by far the biggest and most visited. Uh, the number that Police or AI has provided to them is about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand people, um, in ten days. My understanding is that Zion National Park gets about four thousand visitors annually. So just to kind of put it in a little bit of perspective, that's a lot of people in a very short period of time. I do want to give a, a, really a shout-out to our Parks, our Parks Department. They, um, as, as you know, they provide the operations to the Tulip Fun Festival and then Tulip Time reimburses us for that. So they had the time leading up to the festival, the festival, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they're cleaning up, getting barricades out. Really, Monday morning by ten o'clock, you couldn't tell that anybody else had been in town. It was pretty amazing. And then Thursday night, so they're dragging, I mean, they're living on Mountain Dew and Monster, a lot of them, uh, just to keep going because it's been very busy. And then, of course, Thursday night at about eleven o'clock, they, they get called out for tree damage and had to work Thursday, well, Friday until about four o'clock in the morning. So they have been going, 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 keeping, uh, the festival going, keeping our community going, and just a big shout-out to our Parks Department. So thank you to them.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Uh, next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. Uh, I do have one removal and one. I do have one removal and one appointment this evening. Recommending to counsel, that city council approve the removal of Paul Katerberg from the Compensation Commission effective May twenty, twenty twenty-five, and the appointment of Nikki Ernst-Horse to the Compensation Commission, term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-eight. Just wanted to make sure that the council and the public knew, Paul is being removed from the council, the Compensation Commission as a commissioner because he is no longer eligible to serve on the Compensation Commission because his wife Brenda is our city clerk, and that would be considered a conflict of interest. But we appreciate Paul's service on the Compensation Commission. And Nikki would be, Nikki Ernst-Horse would be a great member of Compensation Commission as a former member of city council. So I'd be looking for a motion in that regard.
So moved.
Moved by Freeman is her support.
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. And I do want to express my appreciation to city staff as well. Parks Department did an absolutely amazing job. And I think the only piece of that that you might have left out, Matt, is that they are also responsible for making sure that Pilgrim Home Cemetery looks great for Memorial Day as well, which is, it's just one thing after another for them. Through the entire month of May, they do a phenomenal job, not only getting the, the things trimmed up as much as they possibly can around the hundreds and hundreds of gravestones that are there, but also, if you get the opportunity on Monday or over the weekend to get out there, all of the flags that they put out there, it is absolutely amazing sight to see. Thank them for, for all of that. And for anybody who's wondering how they did count nine hundred and seventy-six thousand people for Tulip Time, they use that by tracking cellphone data. They, they see how many unique cellphones that are not located right in this area, or in the area. But no, they don't know who you are. They're not tracking what you're doing. They don't know your name, but they know where you're from. And it's my understanding that they're also going to be able to cross-reference that with some anonymized credit card data as well, because the number that we have been using for many years in regard to, since two thousand eighteen, for the economic impact of the Tulip Time Festival is that it has a fifty million dollar economic impact for the community. I think that that number is very, very low now, based on the fact that we've got about a hu, about, about a million people coming, and as we were discussing earlier, that's nine hundred and seventy-six thousand cellphones. There are a lot of people out there who did not have cellphones, who are also visiting this area. So I'm just going to take, mayoral prerogative, and just round it up to a million and just call it that, so. And that's all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Seeing none. Just one more motion I would entertain at this time.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman is her support.
Support.
Support by Rowan. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a good night.